Good evening and welcome, everybody. It's nice to see you all this evening. I'd like to call this City of Lake Forest Park regular business meeting to order for Thursday, October 9th. And with that, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands on an ancient and ever-crowded individual, the party and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Do I hear a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
I'd like to propose a moving of an item.
That's.
I'd like to move that we move the number six presentations ahead of public comments.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Ferratoni is recommending that we move the swearing-in of our new police officer to the top of the agenda before public comments. Do I hear any discussion? Thank you, counsel. It's adopted through unanimous consent. So with that, we're going to move on, Chief, to swearing in our new team member.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm sure everybody else appreciates that, too, that's on this. All right. So, good evening, Mayor, council, and all the community and family there that is here and the officers. Tonight, we're going to swear in our newest police officer, Officer Austin Gutwin. He's also here with his wife, come on up. His wife, Jennifer. So. Come on over here. Get the spotlight, you guys. Austin is the proud father of three children, a seven-year-old, a five-year-old, and a two-year-old, nearly two-year-old. Son, known for his servant-hearted approach to policing and his background, we found that Austin exemplifies unwavering dedication to his community, family, with integrity and compassion for all aspects of his life. Originally from Arizona, Austin moved to Washington about 10 years ago. This is the really cool part. At age nine, he founded Hoops of Hope, a charitable organization centered around basketball marathons that raised millions of dollars to support underprivileged children and combat HIV/AIDS in sub-Saharan Africa. His efforts mobilized over 40,000 participants and funded the construction of hospitals, clinics, schools, computer lab, wells, and projects in the remote African regions, transforming entire communities and saving countless lives through empowering youth to make meaningful change. In addition to his philanthropic work, Austin became an international speaker, and I think it was like 150 different places that you went to? Is that about right? Best-selling author. He has a couple of books that you can find on Amazon, inspiring others with his message of hope and belief that impactful change can happen at any age. His humanitarian contributions have earned him numerous accolades, including recognition as one of the top 10 most caring Americans by the Caring Institute. In his twenties, Austin transitioned to a career in law enforcement. Over the course of an eight-year career, he served both the city of Seattle and the city of Snoqualmie. His assignments have included roles such as school resource officer, field training officer, officer in charge, traffic liaison officer, defensive tactics instructor, background investigator, and detective with our CSPA Major Crimes Task Force. Austin holds a bachelor's degree from Arizona State University and is currently pursuing a master's degree in public safety. Austin remains committed to his noble traditions of policing, consistently treating all individuals with dignity, respect, and fairness. Austin is grateful for the opportunity to spend the rest of his career in humble service to the citizens of Lake Forest Park. And as a personal note, I've never met an officer who shows such genuine gratitude. His thankful spirit shines through his everything he does, both in service and his daily interaction. As Aesop wrote, gratitude is the sign of noble souls. So, welcome, Officer Gutwin. So, we're going to make it official, and Judge Grant is going to come in and swear in.
All right. All right. Have you raised your right hand? I state your name.
I, Austin Gutwin.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
As police officer.
As police officer.
For the city of Lake Forest Park.
For the city of Lake Forest Park.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office.
Perform the duties of the office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
And I will support and maintain.
The ordinances of the city of Lake Forest Park.
The ordinances of the city of Lake Forest Park.
And the laws and the Constitution.
And the laws and the Constitution.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Congratulations.
All right, now for the really fun part. If we can have Jennifer come on up here. All right, it's official. You want to take a picture out here with the council? One, two.
That's a little one.
Yeah, get the baby.
Well, some of you know that sometimes this, go ahead, Chief, I'm sorry.
Just saying.
Go.
That's good.
You bet. Thank you. Sometimes this job for policymakers can get a little weighty, but this is the fun stuff. So, thank you all for coming. This is really something we look forward to. So, welcome aboard, Officer Gutwin. Thank you, everybody. We're going to move on to public comments. Let's see, I've got a whole bunch of stuff to read here. State law RCW 4217A 55 does not allow the use of public facilities to promote or oppose ballot measures. I should know this by heart now, because I've been reading this for a while. Promoting or opposing the city's levy ballot measure during a council meeting would be a use of a public facility in violation of state law. This includes comments made during the public comment section of a council meeting. The statute, however, does not limit your ability to support or oppose a ballot measure on your own time using your own resources. The council will not be accepting online public comments. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council on agenda items or any other topic the council might have purview or control over. However, the mayor or council may not respond to comments from the public. If the comments are of a nature that the council does not council does not have influence or control over, then the mayor or presiding officer may request a speaker to suspend their comments. Council may direct staff to follow up on items brought up by the public. Comments are limited to a three-minute time. Administrator Hill, thank you very much for waiting in the wings. Okay. Any friends here want to join us? Starting out with Mr. Ross, Sage Ross. Please join the podium. Welcome.
Thank you. So, we had a gang of federal agents show up at Planet Fitness last week. One of my family members was there, so I'll share what they observed and then reflect briefly on our police department policy. Around 10:30 last Thursday, a group of about eight U.S. Marshals came into Planet Fitness right over here. And I note that U.S. Marshals have been enlisted in immigration enforcement since January. And they handcuffed a man while he was literally on a step machine. And my family member reported that they seemed to basically be trying to startle the man and instigate a physical confrontation. They provided no explanation, and a number of patrons were vocally protesting. One elderly man was demanding answers and said something along the lines of, "I have a right to ask questions," to which an agent replied along the lines of, "No, you don't." And another patron yelled, "How does it feel to be a fascist?" And an agent yelled back, "Pretty good, actually." And afterwards, the staff were visibly shaken and confirmed that the agents had not asked permission, not presented a warrant, not told them anything about the raid, cursed at them. Afterwards, we got a statement from Police Chief Harden clarifying that they got a call saying that ICE operations were happening and that they responded at the time that they have a policy of not getting involved in that unless there's a safety issue. I just want to note that since the U.S. Marshals have been doing immigration enforcement, it's kind of a distinction without a difference of whether it was ICE or U.S. Marshals. But anytime, as we've seen in Chicago, LA, DC, and Portland, anytime these federal agents are doing this kind of operation, it is a safety issue. They're out here trying to cause fights, trying to look for any excuse to exercise violence. And it would be really nice to have know that our local police had our back and were watching out to make sure that violence didn't escalate in situations like this. In this particular case, the statement from Chief Harden said that they learned that this person had an extensive criminal background. But hearing that from the feds doesn't mean it's true. We've seen them do this kind of thing with other immigration cases where they're basically using that as a pretext to just ship people off. So they're here, and it's probably not going to stop happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Appreciate that. We're not allowed to respond, but I will say there is additional information that staff, particularly Chief Harden, will be happy to share with you all, so everybody understands that that RPD is doing everything they can to keep us absolutely safe and in the loop. So, it's an ongoing situation. I have a scratch line here. I think I have Kathy Como next after that.
Hi.
Welcome, Kathy. It's nice to see you.
Um, I'm going to be in the same vein a little bit. Oh, over a year ago, I was in a fender bender at Lake Forest Park Mall, upper level. I called the police. They came really fast. And they were the nicest officers I think I've met. Very kind, very well-spoken. They had guns on them. And they walked upright, and they listened carefully, and they were great. Like our Chief Harden. Okay. October 2nd, 2025, 10:30, 35 in the morning. My husband was dropping me off to the lower-level library, the main entrance. And he was, he just parked parallel to the door so I wouldn't have to walk too far. He's a very nice man. And in front of my car, our car, my car, there was a black shiny Kia. And I was unbuckling my seatbelt and getting my purse organized and moving the dog to the backseat. So, and then I got one foot out. And this man was scurrying over. And I'm going to stop right there because I want to fill you in on what my husband saw, but I did not see. I just want to be completely honest. This man got out of his Kia, which was a rental, and he slipped, slid across the top of his car. And then what I saw is he's crouching down and moving very fast to Planet Fitness. They were storming Planet Fitness. I saw six, seven other men dressed just like him, no guns, well, no machine guns. There were guns. And they were rushing in to Planet Fitness next to my knitting store across from the pastry stores beside the library. These guys were out to do harm. Now, I've taught seventh grade. I've spent 32 years of my life with kids. I know a bad kid when I see one. These guys were bad boys. They, I got back in my car, told my husband, "Go!" They were out for trouble. They were like grizzly bears. I didn't have the feeling they were in control of their bodies very well in space. I did have the feeling they were dangerous. They were grizzly bears with alligator brains. Now, I know our police is doing everything they can. I was terrorized. I don't know that this could have been prevented with the current situation. But I do think it needs to be talked about here. And just put it out in the open. So I'm going to go sit down. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. That must have been very scary. Let's see. Make sure I get everybody here. Jeff Newton, welcome, Jeff. We have people here. Okay. Some scratched out things.
Suddenly, this doesn't seem as important. Boris received a number of requests to find out where Stride 3 is in Lake Forest Park from our members. Here's our best assessment. According to Sound Transit's September 2025 property acquisition report, 90 of the 134 properties impacted by acquisition, a total of two acres. That leaves one-third, 44, properties unsettled. These are the hardest cases. They're resistant owners. They're tent needing relocation. Parcels are tied up in legal disputes. The timeline has already slipped. In May 2025, the contractor need date in this report was October 31st. By September, it had been pushed back to February 1st, 2026, a clear sign that acquisitions are behind schedule. Our understanding is the city will not accept permit application until Sound Transit has taken possession of all the legal properties. Sound Transit's permit matrix shows that Lake Forest Park must obtain, have a pre-application meeting, a major critical area work permit, tree removal and replacement permits, work hour improvements, and demolition improvements. Seattle recently streamlined its permitting code for Sound Transit, hoping to cut review time in half. This should not be done here. Faster permitting exclusively for Sound Transit diminishes public review and transparency and fairness to our neighbors. These permits affect nearly 134 properties, meaning 100 or more, maybe even 200 applications will come into our city. Full scrutiny property by property is vital to both impacted residents in all of Lake Forest Park. Another hurdle is staging. Sound Transit estimates 95,000 tons of dirt and debris will be excavated in Lake Forest Park. That's as many as 3,000 dump truck loads and lengthy truck queuing for months. According to WashDOT and the Federal Highway Administration, corridor projects of this scale typically require five or more acres of right-of-way staging and lay-down space. For town center and Bothell Way businesses, this would mean reduced parking, diminished customer access, revenue losses, most likely requiring mitigation or compensation adding to more time to the project. So, what's the timeline? Property acquisitions completed maybe early '26. Invitation to bid may be issued early 2026. Contract awarded late '26, early '27. Permitting reviews into mid to late 2027. Construction start date late '27, early '28. Completion sometime in 2029. All of this must fit with Sound Transit's $581 million baseline budget. If costs rise more than 10%, the project must undergo a lengthy rebaseline process. Meanwhile, the other two stride segments, Shoreline Seattle, Bothell Kenmore, have bid approval for one and another bid that will close in a month or so. Leaving Lake Forest Park is the only place where scope changes can take place. My wife is going to finish. You want me, it's like two paragraphs. Do you want me to finish it?
Counsel, menable? Please, go ahead, Jeff.
Sound Transit has launched its enterprise initiative to confront rising costs, delays, and inefficiencies. Estimates now of almost $200 billion for this project that was estimated to be $53.8 billion when we voted on it in 2016. It's a top-to-bottom review of operations, which projects can be delivered, which may be delayed, and which ones may need to be scaled back. In plain terms, they are trying to realign a wish list to deal with a projected cost of nearly $200 billion. The city should lobby Sound Transit to ensure Lake Forest Park is included in that enterprise study. Taken together, property delays, complex permitting, staging demands, budget risks, and the enterprise initiative, it's clear Stride 3 in Lake Forest Park has a long way to go before construction begins. Realistically, shovels will not hit the ground until early May, until mid-2027, completed in 2029. That means you, the council, still have influence. Now is the time to press Sound Transit, as you did in your near-unanimous letter last year, for a lower-cost, lower-impact alternative, not building a lat-bat lane for simply 12 blocks between 153rd and 165th, which could save $50 million or more with only marginal impact on weekday rush-hour travel times through Lake Forest Park. Thank you for indulging me on this.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate that. Do you want to make sure, Mary Kay, did you want to speak or as well? Okay. Your side up. So, all right, is there anyone else in the House that would like to participate in public comment? Lots of friends here. Okay, going once, going twice. We'll close public comment. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lebo.
Thank you. You know, what we heard this evening is very disturbing in terms of what it does to our citizens when our government is arresting people for incidents that may or may not have occurred. We don't know. I think it would be useful if the council could hear what our policies are with regard to these kinds of situations.
I think you. Yes. Deputy Mayor Ferratoni.
So, I'd also like to acknowledge, completely different topic, on the number and volume of letters council received about a property at 35th and 40th, the intersection. I'd just like to acknowledge the names. So, I'm going to pronounce some of these incorrectly, so I apologize. It is a very lengthy list. Mindamart, David Berliner, Julie Dietrich, Natalie Post, Alice Peterson, Sarah Tucker, Robert Anderson, Michelle Markwood, Michaelin Walker, Bethany Jury, Lori Nichols, Hillary De La Cruz, Amanda Royal, Stephanie Angelus, Amy Youngoff, Laurie McDeEdward, Tamara Erickson, Meredith Manville, Donna Berliner, Jovalyn Oates, Elizabeth De Filippo, Liz Parker, Marilyn Newson, Emily Burnham, okay, deep breath, I'm about halfway through, Lynn Ivanco, Patty Conroy, Marion Sterling, Allison Akova, Ryan Newt, Teresa Hayward, Dan Benson, the Stewardship Foundation, Cara Bab, Sarah Perrigo, Nathan Horder, Kara Hartz, Marty Ross, Kimberly Ames, Erin Jeffers, Anne Udalloy, Seth Fernald, Kelly Velasco, Josh Nazbick, Nathan Manville, Yvonne Green, Ramona Wajiranthi, Kristy Watkins, Robert Whedon, Megan Tully, Jennifer Wolf, Stas Black, Tonya Stifler, Joan L., Ben Hudson, Kathleen Kenberg. Thank you for writing us.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Appreciate that. Vice Chair Golda.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Lebo said. I think there's a lot of uncertainty, and in that uncertainty leads to the potential, it leads to fear, and it leads to the potential for escalations that need not happen. In terms of what is under the city's purview, it's our police department. And so, I do think, I would like to see, is this something we could have a discussion about at an upcoming work session or committee of the whole meeting? Because I do think it's an important topical item that we should be discussing.
Absolutely. And without the chief being in the room, I don't want to get out over my skis here. With the council's indulgence, may I proceed? I generally don't comment. We generally don't comment on public comment. But this is an important topic. It's something that's, that has absolutely been first and foremost in the PD's and the administration's mind over the last few days, not last few days, since October 2nd. And very alarming, the rumors that surrounded this incident were, many of them were actually factual. And I have seen the video of the altercation. The chief has held the marshal's office feet to the fire and sent a very stern letter saying, "We do not understand why you do not follow protocol to inform us of what was going on." It is unacceptable for the for the, as a matter of fact, you know what? Let's read it into the record, because I want to make sure that everyone understands that people are being, are very concerned about this. And on a national stage, it's very concerning what's going on. And when it spills over into our small community where we are very welcoming, we're compassionate, we're considerate, it's really alarming. Hang on just a moment while I pull this up. There we go. Chief, is it okay for me to read this, read this letter to the marshal's office, or would you like to comment? Okay. You know what? I would like you to read it, please. I'll give it to you. If you don't mind, sir. Yep. You got it? Okay. Thank you, Chief. Sorry to put you on the spot.
I'm just going to recap really, really quick that we received a phone call that ICE agents were at the Planet Fitness and that they were doing some kind of operation. Our current policy is that we stay away from anything that's federally related. We don't want to be involved with anything that's going on with immigration stuff. So, when that call came in, the sergeant that was on duty contacted our commander and said, "Hey, our policy is we don't get involved. This call came in. What do we do?" You're right. Policy, we don't deal with it. It was one phone call that came in. That was all that we got. So, it wasn't like we have 15 phone calls in, and we need to rush there. Something was going on. So, that was the perspective of our police department initially. Once we got kind of more information of what was going on, I didn't feel comfortable about the situation, and I had an officer go investigate this case a couple of days later. He got witness statements. He got more information. It looked like it turned out to be not an ICE investigation, but a criminal investigation where they were trying to arrest somebody. At that point, not a big deal. But when we dug digger, there was a lot of issues that we have at this time. So, I'm going to read what I wrote to the acting marshal of the United States Marshal Service. So, I'm writing to formally express concern regarding a U.S. Marshal Service operation that occurred within the city of Lake Forest Park on Thursday, October 2nd, at approximately 10:37 AM, the Planet Fitness located in Lake Forest Park Town Center. According to firsthand accounts and follow-up interviews conducted by our officer, five to six armed personnel identified by mixed markings, including police and U.S. Marshal Service, entered the gym and physically detained an individual who was using exercise equipment. During the arrest, gym staff and patrons reported significant confusion and fear due to the lack of identification and aggressive demeanor of those involved. Witnesses, including the Planet Fitness manager, described the following behavior. When staff inquired about the nature of the operation, they were told to mind their, something, a comment I won't make tonight, business. Their personnel refused to identify themselves or provide clarification of their role or agency. The operation caused panic among gym members, several of whom believed an active threat was occurring. When one gym member verbally challenged the officers by calling them fascists, one responded pretty blank good. While we understand and respect the operational duties of the U.S. Marshal Service, I must stress that no prior notification or deconfliction occurred with our police department. Historically, federal, state, and regional partners have provided professional courtesy notifications before conducting enforcement actions within our jurisdiction and deconfliction efforts. This is a vital component of officer safety, public safety, and inter-agency cooperation. In addition, the tactical decision to make a public arrest inside a crowded gym raises serious safety concerns. Removing a suspect from a stair step in a densely populated space introduces significant risk to uninvolved citizens, officers, and the staff. Covert or alternate arrest strategies in less populated environments would have substantially mitigated those dangers. While we later confirmed that the arrestee has a serious criminal background, including suspected involvement in a shooting, robbery, and drug-related offenses, while we, now, I want to stop real quick there. We did, you had made a, in citizen comments, there was a comment that was made. I don't know if I'm allowed to say this because of citizen comments, but the comment was made that, we don't know if that's actually legit. It is legit because we did the actual criminal history checks to find out this information. While we recognize the importance of bringing such individuals to justice, the method and execution of this operation place our community unnecessarily at risk and undermine public trust in law enforcement professionalism. Our department requests that this incident be reviewed internally for compliance with U.S. Marshal Service policies and expectations of personal or professional conduct. Additionally, we respectfully ask that the future operations within the city of Lake Forest Park include prior coordination with our dispatch, NORCOM, and command staff to ensure officer safety, public confidence, and mutual respect among agencies. Your group has always been cooperative team player, but in this instance, not so much. It caused alarm and fear in my community. Thank you for taking my phone call this afternoon and appreciate taking this matter seriously. So, this was a phone call that I made first and had some conversations with this supervisor, and then I wanted some documentation that this was addressed. with this supervisor, and then I wanted some documentation that this was addressed and was sent to them. So I do add, I have more information that came from an HSI person that basically said they have this information today as well. And it was great meeting with the, this, this afternoon. Just wanted to close the loop on this with you. This was a US Marshals Task Force arrest and no one from ICE or HSI participated. However, it stemmed from an ongoing HSI-led Homeland Security Task and Force investigation. The individual has significant violent criminal history and although he is, this arrest was not due to his immigration status. So she was just thanking me and if I needed more information. So one thing that this did lead to is I'm developing a policy that is very similar to Spokane and Bellevue's policy where we will actually be going to these calls now and identifying the subjects that are involved because I want to try and stay away from any kind of criminal impersonation that may happen. It is not the safest thing to have two law enforcement agencies going at it. So we have to tread really lightly and delicately and with lots of safety. But it's really good to have officers in uniform that are identified that we can find out if this is a legit law enforcement operation. Like I said, we really need notification prior to these incidents. That makes this a lot safer. And then I know that, you know, they're doing an operation, but I don't want any of my officers involved with any ICE investigation. So we'll be working through this and I just wanted to let the community know that that's what's been going on.
One more thing I'd add, Chief, too, is it's the department's policy through the chief's leadership that in cases of if ICE said they are coming to the community, they have to have a felony warrant for something very specific criminal.
An arrest warrant, not a subpoena or a.
It has to be, it has to be far more than, it has to be a very, very serious, serious situation. And I would also add to, and the chief is summarizes very well, there have been a couple of community members that have reached out and suggested policy that the chief has listened to very, very carefully and interacted with them regarding what procedurally this community should be considering in the very near future for making sure that people don't, aren't fearful of unknown people coming in with, you know, plastic badges. I mean, it's happened in other places. So it's, it's disrespectful. I will say this very clearly. And the chief can't say it because he has to work with these other agencies, but I don't. For the US Marshal Service to come in here like thugs and do what they did to scare you folks is absolutely unacceptable. And we will not tolerate it. And if it means that, you know, some of us are down there standing in front of them saying, no, you're not doing it, it'll happen. I have every confidence that the department, who is one of the most responsive in the state, we have second safest city in the state, we're not going to let these people prevail. So we'll, we'll, we'll make sure it happens. It's a fluid situation when it comes to things in our world. And we just have to take the higher road and make sure that we do what we have to do.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me address it in front of the community, too.
Thank you, Chief, for all you do. Let's leave it there for now. I think we could spend a whole lot of time on this, but happy to answer any questions offline or in future conversations. And with that, we're moving on to a proclamation.
Councilor Riddle, please. Thank you. I will give them a moment to step out, some quiet space for this proclamation.
Thank you, everybody.
A proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas October is recognized as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, that first began in 1981 by the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence as a day of unity to connect battered women's advocates across the country. Whereas domestic violence is a pattern of physical, emotional, verbal, and/or sexual abuse, which includes but is not limited to threats, intimidation, isolation, and/or financial control. And whereas domestic violence is an intentional pattern of behavior that is used by one person to harm and take power and control over another person in the context of a date, family, roommate, or caretaker relationship. And whereas domestic violence is an epidemic affecting individuals in every community, regardless of age, economic status, sexual orientation, gender, race, religion, or nationality. And whereas one in three women and one in four men in the United States are victims of domestic violence, and a woman is killed by a spouse, ex-spouse, or dating partner every 72 or 74 hours in America. And whereas one in 15 children are exposed to domestic violence each year, and 90% of these children are eyewitnesses to this violence. And whereas the city of Lake Forest Park remains committed to a professional response to incidences of domestic violence in our region. Now, therefore, the mayor and the city, council of the city of Lake Forest Park do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Lake Forest Park and call upon all community members to speak out against domestic violence and support local efforts to assist victims of these crimes in finding the help and healing they need. Sign this ninth day of October 2025.
Thank you, Councilmember Riddle. With that, we're moving on to the consent calendar. I'd enter a motion for adoption.
Before you do, I have a note. There's an $81 discrepancy under the voucher certification and approval. So if you're following along at home, five lines down, it should read numbers 88251 through 88306 and the amount of $453,094.71. And similarly, at the very end, total approved claim fund transaction should be $853,938.18. So just want to enter that into the record.
But thank you, Deputy Mayor, for a tiny, appreciate.
With that, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Moving second, any questions or comment? Okay, thank you. It's been adopted, adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, council. I'm sorry, councilmember, good. I don't want to forget you. Did you have any questions before? Okay. Thank you very much. All the way down. We have a lot there. Okay. Ordinances and resolutions for introduction and referral. Corey, we have the resolution 25-2033, accepting Horizon View art installation donation. This is really exciting. Welcome, Roz.
Yeah, so here tonight, asking council to approve the donation agreement. The garden tour has fully funded the project. It will look similar to this, not exactly. We tried to start this project pre-COVID. COVID happened. We then picked it up last summer and we, Roz rallied a group that included her, Celia Soldal, the third place commons director, Laura James, Shore Lake Arts Director, Tyler Ditman, the LFP Parks and Rec Board Chair, and Tara Shadak, a local resident and a gallery manager for a local gallery down in Edmonds. And so we had 10 submissions and the group picked Melissa Cole. And I think she's doing a fantabulous job. I think it's bigger and better than what we ever expected. And it's going to be a great addition to Horizon View. So I don't know if you want to talk.
Would you like to?
So you saw this once before. I don't know if you want a closer look, but the bottom is all mosaic animals. And we had a two-day mosaic, we had a two-day mosaic workshop that the artist and a helper put on in the commons. We had at least 70 people over two days who did mosaics at tables in the commons. It was fabulous. It was just fabulous. So the pad has been poured. If you've been up to Horizon View Park, you've seen the orange fencing and the pad. And we are hoping that the end of next week that she's going to put the mosaics down, the footing, the, on the pad. It is a little bit rain dependent. So we're not advertising that. And we hope that the rest of the sculpture will be installed on Friday, the 24th. But she has to coordinate that with the contractor who poured the footing because he's going to come help her. So we hope that's cast in stones, so to speak. Might not be. And then if that happens, and we know, I'll know that in a day or two. We plan to have the dedication donation ceremony on Saturday morning at 10 o'clock on October 25th. And we'll be very excited to get this completed. It's going to look much better than an orange fence. So just, so the bench is concrete and has, she's a glass mosaic artist. So she's done the mosaics on the bench. It's two-sided. One side looks at the pickleball courts and the other side looks at the park. The community did the base. And of course, she had it all organized and planned and drawn out and so forth. So it was pretty organized. The bench is concrete. These are metal. They aren't going to look just like this. They will be painted, this will be painted green, but obviously you can't do a maquette that's exactly like the finished product. So thank you. Well, I guess we're asking if you will accept this donation so that we can move forward.
Well, thank you very much, Roz. We appreciate. And thank you, Corey, as well. Colleagues, this is an uncontroversial item. I would make a recommendation that you suspend the three-touch rule and adopt the resolution.
It's called nature's repose.
Oh, great. Many thanks to you guys and the, and the group. Somebody would like to make a motion to suspend three-touch rule? Yeah, Deputy Mayor, for a time.
I'd like to move to suspend the three-touch rule for resolution 25-2033, accepting Horizon View art installation donation.
Second.
Moving seconded to suspend three-touch rule on resolution 252033, accepting Horizon View art installation. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I haven't reviewed the agreement in detail, but who owns the artwork in terms of the copyright because of future considerations?
You bet.
So the, the piece will belong to the city and she will do a maintenance plan before she gets her final payment. But the copyright belongs to the artist.
The reason.
So the city could take pictures of it to use for educational or marketing, you know, whatever purposes, but nothing can be sold. You can't take pictures of it and sell them as note cards. That is a copyright infringement. Does that answer your question?
It does. Though there is a concern, though, for the future in terms of if it ever needs to be moved for whatever reason, we don't own the rights to move it.
So that's in the artist contract. I don't know if it's, I can't remember if it's in the agreement, but it's almost, it's universal, actually, that the artist owns the copyright. And if you want, if you need to move it for some reason, you need to contact the artist before you do that so that the artist can say, you know, I want this back. Or yes, you can move it to this location, or this is just not going to work for this, or whatever. But she does own the copyright.
The reason I bring this up is this does, I'm all for accepting the donation. That's not the issue. It's about future issues that may arise with the pieces of the art. It gets damaged, or it needs to be moved, or some other consideration. The city may not be in the, in a advantageous position in order to do what it may think is the best course of action.
Colleagues, any other questions or concerns? Thank you, Mr. Lebo. I, we've enjoyed a very positive relationship with artists throughout the city's history. I, I hear your concerns. I, personally, it's not a broad issue for me. Other concerns, colleagues? Okay. Hearing no other comments or questions, all those in favor of suspending the three-touch rule, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it, I think. I, I, I think I saw your lips move there. Councilor, we're good. Thank you. Or your finger wagging, I'm not sure. And with that, we'll go to the main, the main, yes.
Yes, I will.
Thank you very much. I hope you enjoy this for, you know, 100 years to come.
Suspension of the rules. We got to go to the resolution. Almost, almost there.
Yeah. Okay, so I'd like to move resolution 25-2033, actually accepting Horizon View art installation donation.
Moving seconded to having suspended the three-touch rule to accept resolution 25, is it 2033, accepting Horizon View art installation donation. Deputy referee, Tony.
And I wanted to thank both Ms. Mattson and Ms. Bird. Just amazing shepherding this through. It's been a long process. I still can't believe this is only the second piece of public art in Lake Forest Park history. So we got a little catch-up to do, but.
There are other.
Oh, there are? Okay.
There's the otters, there's the.
The otters were donated by the master gardeners to the park, the drinking fountain in Animal Acres. It has the people fountain and the dog fountain.
My daughter was playing with that today.
Done by, I'm blanking on his name, but that was a public art project that a committee selected the artist, the whole thing. You've got public art in City Hall on the windows and the floor and the door handle. That was part of the construction budget. The bridge in Blue Heron Park and.
The quilt.
And the garden tour put a little money into that to make it a viable project. So.
Well, and thank you for helping me underscore my point then, that I thought that this was only the second piece of public art. Means, means we really need to publicize this stuff more, right? You know, that there's all this wonderful art we have that needs to be celebrated. So thank you for doing your part in it.
Should be on the website on every park that has a piece. There's also a salmon fountain on the trail and that belongs to King County. Was their project early on. But yes, there's not a lot. We'd love to have more. This is the second commission that the garden tour has donated to the city. That's where you got that idea.
That's a riddle.
I really do appreciate more public art in this community. And it's unfortunate it's taking so long to get new ones out. We do have technically a 1% art policy, but it's sort of fallen by the wayside over the years. And I think it's time for us to think about reinvigorating that policy and starting to enforce it. Because I want to see more public art around.
So the garden tour funds the four nonprofit organizations that put it on. They get some of the money and the rest has been banked for public art. And so we're not completely out of money and we're still going. We have, you know, next June, there'll be another one. So by the time the city is ready to do the waterfront park, we hope that the arts will be an integral part of that park.
You bet.
Rather than a add-on afterwards. It's much better if you have an artist on board on whatever committee does the planning.
I, I fully agree. And I'm looking forward to possibly having some art on the roundabout at some point.
Any other comments or questions on the resolution before we move to the vote? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of adoption of resolution 252033, accepting Horizon View art installation donation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. It passes unanimously. Thank you for your patience, Roz and Corey.
Can say thank you.
Machines of government churn slowly, sometimes painfully, too. But thank you. This is an exciting project. Okay, we're moving on to ordinances and resolution for council discussion. Let's see. First, we have resolution 2520-2031, authorizing the mayor to sign an amendment to the A to agreement. Wow, there's a lot of numbers here. PC 25-96103-014 with the state of Washington State Department of Commerce for funding of the SR104 and 40th Place Roundabout Project. Ms. Phillips, welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. I do have two back-to-back presentations tonight. So this is the very first one. Thank you, Matt, for pulling up the slides. Got the clicker. So this first presentation is for, as, as Mayor read in the title, the funding for the roundabout project. One of the funding items is a loan from the Department of Commerce Public Works Board. So I'm just going to start with background on this. Last year, June 2024, the city decided to apply for a loan from the Public Works Board to be part of the funding package for the roundabouts construction. A number of months later, in September, we were awarded $2 million from Public Works Board. That's the amount that we asked for. And then creating the contract documents took some time. But once that was done, the city and the Public Works Board finally executed that loan document in March of this year. And then there, there aren't, these next bullet points aren't listed on the slide there. But what happened after March was, as everyone knows, we did do public advertisement for construction for the roundabout project in June. And then we received and publicly opened those bids in July of this year. And as you all know, the lowest responsive and responsible bid came from Johansson for 5.4. came from Johansson for 5.4 million. And City Council unanimously awarded that bid to Johansson a couple council meetings ago. And anyway, following the opening of the bids, seeing that number 5.4 million, city staff decided to go back to Public Works Board and request another $500,000 to be added on to the loan total. And that was just to support the actual construction cost. And then bringing it to today, the Public Works Board has agreed to do so and has created Amendment A, which represents that change. And I'm bringing it to you now. So Amendment A, this, a first amendment to the construction funding agreement with Public Works Board has a value of $500,000. The original construction funding agreement value was $2 million. If this amendment is executed, the new total will be $2.5 million. The other terms of the loan that were agreed upon previously are not changing. It is still a 20 year loan term. The interest rate is still 1.71%, which is very good. And then the fiscal implications of this decision, essentially it's the debt service for this loan. It's the Transportation Benefit District Fund that supports this debt service. And Director Vaughn actually calculated these numbers earlier for me. But the original loan had an annual debt service of 118,917. If we do move forward with this amendment, the $2.5 million loan will have an annual debt service of 148,646. And once again, it is fully supported by the Transportation Benefit District. And I think that that's all of the information about this one. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Excellent presentation. Colleagues, questions for Ms. Phillips? On this amendment, it's exciting, we're getting down to the final nuances of this. I signed how many documents today for the acquisition?
Thank you for signing all of them.
Five signatures, I think it was, plus dates and times. And I think I gave a pint of blood in the process, too. Vice Chair Goldman, please.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Is there any time sensitivity that we need to inform the Public Works Board about the loan?
There's no time sensitivity as far as Public Works Board is concerned. The only time sensitivity is, I guess, within the city, up to you, how quickly you want to have all the funding for the roundabout project secured. It's your purview.
Deputy Mayor for Tony, did you have a hand raised or?
No.
Anyone else down the line? Councilmember, good. Did you have any questions? You're now off in really small box, so I wanted to make sure I can see your hand. Okay, thank you. Yeah, Deputy Mayor for Tony.
Okay. Wanted to make sure that nobody had any questions, but seeing none, I would be in favor, given that, even though there is no time sensitivity on our acting amendment, as Project Manager Phillips said, it's important that we get all of our ducks in a row. So I would like to move to waive the three touch rule on this.
Been moved to waive the three touch rule regarding Resolution twenty five two zero three one. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the three touch rule for Resolution twenty five dash two zero three one. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor of waiving the three touch rule, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it, thank you, Council. I'd entertain a motion for the main resolution. Yes, Deputy refer to apologies.
I'd like to move Resolution twenty five dash twenty thirty one, authorizing the mayor to sign Amendment A to Agreement PC twenty five ninety six one oh three zero one four with the Washington State Department of Commerce for funding for the SR one oh four and fortieth place Northeast Roundabout Project.
I hear a second.
Second.
So been moved and seconded, any questions or comments? All those in favor signify of adoption of Resolution twenty five, having suspended the three touch rule. All those in favor of adoption of Resolution twenty five two zero three one, authorizing the mayor to sign Amendment A to Agreement PC twenty five ninety six one zero three dash zero four with the Washington State Department of Commerce for funding of the SR one oh four and fortieth place roundabout project, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Council. Thank you very much, Project Manager Phillips. Really appreciate that. That's a milestone. Appreciate that. And we're moving on to item B. You get to stay there. We're on Resolution twenty five two zero two seven, authorizing the mayor to sign Amendment Number One to the Professional Services Agreement, AG twenty four dash zero four four with Consoor North America Incorporated for Phase Two, 30% Design Services for the Beach Drive Lift Station Project. Ms. Phillips.
Thank you again. So this presentation, as Mayor just read in the title, is related to the Beach Drive Lift Station. Consoor is doing 30% design for that project. And this presentation is about Amendment One to the Professional Services Agreement with Consoor for their design. Oh. Is it possible this is not the updated one? This is what slide two looks like. We're going to bring up, hopefully, an updated slide deck for this. It includes maps, some other stuff that we didn't talk about when we talked about this last time. This is the second touch on this Amendment One to the Professional Services Agreement.
It is the one we have on the diocese.
Correct. That is accurate. What you have on the diocese is accurate.
It's, there's two slides missing, I believe, at the beginning.
Sorry to keep everyone waiting.
No, no.
Sorry about the confusion.
So we are too efficient going about the roundabout item. Do you all like to take a five minute recess? Grab some water?
Yes, please.
Oh.
No, definitely.
Sure, carry on then.
You might as well. Nice one.
Please, Ms. Phillips, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mayor, Council. So this first slide here is just to situate you with the project site. City Hall and Town Center are up there in the upper corner where we are right now, directly across the street, Vadoe, Civic Club and future Lakefront Park. The yellow shape outlines the project site. So it does include Civic Club, the current Lion Creek Park, the parcels that will become the Lakefront Park, and then the impacted residences that are to the east. There's five homes there to the east, including Mayor's House. All of those are part of the project area. This one, it's a little bit more zoomed in, but maybe not zoomed in enough for you to actually be able to read everything. But I'll just explain the parts that are drawn in red. It's very high level schematic drawing of what's coming for this project. For those of you who may not know or maybe just don't remember, we have two lift stations in this location right now. They're at the end of their life and they need to be replaced. We can replace them with just one. And that red rectangle is where the proposed new lift station will go. It's at the furthest edge of our new Lakefront Park, essentially kind of straddling the border of Civic Club and the park that's coming. And then the two red circles are going to be new manhole covers. And then the red line connecting those is the new sewer main that will be installed as part of this project. It'll connect to the original sewer main on either side, which is gray. And then also highlighted in this drawing are the sewer laterals, which are essentially the topic of discussion tonight, having to do with this First Amendment to the 30% design. And those in particular are the sewer laterals for the five homes that this project affects. And as you can see, you know, hopefully by the image, the homes are like pretty tight together. So getting laterals in between them, it's, it's a little bit more of a job than I think anyone at Conso or the city or anywhere really thought through at the very, very beginning stages of this project. So this is a little bit background. I sort of have mentioned a lot of this, but I'll go over it again. Conso did an options analysis for us in 2024, looking at what we can do to replace these aging lift stations. We decided on what we wanted to do, which is essentially the plan I showed you in the last slide. And we brought Conso on to do 30% design for this project. Early on in the project, as was shown in the last slide, we realized that there needed to be more side sewer design work happening now. This is something that normally would happen in a later phase of the project. But because it's so integral to the design, the depths, the of everything that it connects to, it needed to be thought about now. It couldn't be wait, it couldn't be pushed until later. We did also hold a community meeting and we talked about this a little bit with the community, along with many other things, and this came up as an important topic. So we decided we really need to move on this now instead of wait until a later phase. So this contract amendment, it includes a scope of services revision related to everything I'm talking about with a value of $30,741. This is work that would be performed as part of this amendment is work that would have been performed later. This one, this is not the most up to date one either, but that's okay. You'll, in your packet, it's just, it's only a tiny bit different, but all the content is the same. The main point I'm trying to drive home is that performing this work at present means that we won't have to perform it in a later design phase. And then the contract amendment for $30,741 would change the 30,000, I mean, would change the 30% design fee from $225,074 to $255,815. The specific work that that approximate $30,000 increase includes is the addition of a side sewer site visit, the addition of another site visit to look at residential plumbing, the development of those plans related to all the evidence that's gathered during those site visits, which will include engineers drawings, and the addition of a sub consultant to do survey work. I'm going to skip that slide because it wasn't in your packet. So then here is the project budget, which is another item that was added to this presentation as a result of comments from the last time, the first touch on this one. And the area in the green, design estimate, these costs, the costs at the top are real numbers. So the options analysis did cost us $23,547. That's what we paid in 2024 for the options analysis. The 30% design fee of about $225,000 is the contract value that we have with Conso. The amendment value is the next line there, $30,741. And then the fourth line under design estimate is an estimate. It's our estimate for 100% design. It's not a hard value yet. So that totals about $900,000. Going over to the right, you'll see the construction cost estimate is 2.447 about million dollars. And then right of way estimate is a complete unknown at this point. We don't have a right of way agent working on this project as of yet. It's too early. So we understand that easements will have to be put into place, but we don't know the costs around that yet. So that total estimated project budget right now is 3.355 million. This project is supported by the Sewer Capital Fund. And I should note that the current CIP has 3.074 million in it for this project. And that includes 500,000 for design, which was really a placeholder number that was put there very early on before we knew how much design would cost. And then it also includes 2.574 million for construction. And that was based on an early engineer's estimate of construction costs. And that, those two numbers are what total, 3.074 million. So that's the project budget currently at this early phase. And then the fiscal implications. Like I've said before, this amendment brings forward a portion of the design that would have occurred at a later phase. And there are sufficient funds in the Sewer Capital Fund to support this $30,741 amendment. And that's the whole presentation. Thank you for listening. I know that was like a lot to get through.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Really appreciate it. Colleagues, questions for Ms. Phillips? Councilmember Lebo.
Thank you for the presentation. If we could go back to the project budget, and I appreciate the effort to put together project budget, it would be useful that even under the right of way estimate, you could probably just do a square footage estimate at this point, at least put you in the ballpark. You know, the value of the land and the amount of area that you would need for your easement. And then you can crank out what would be a reasonable right of way estimate, recognizing that it's probably more than a dollar and probably less than half a million. In terms of the funding, though, in the current, it's showing as $3.1 million. Is there a sufficient funding if in fact grows to a $4 million project? Recognizing that the right of way easement cost will have some value.
I'll let Director Vaughn speak.
I mean, this, this project is, if the project grows and the fund balance at the time that this project moves to construction, then the city may, and I'm going to, I'm saying that very loosely at this point, if the fund balance isn't there in the Sewer Capital Fund, then they may, we may have to go out for funding.
Would it be, is there an opportunity to understand what the fund balance is to see if we could support a $4 million?
This, I can tell you right now off the top of my head that there's over $3 million in that fund.
Right, we budgeted the 3.1. Okay. Thank you.
If it expands further than that, I, there's a, this is very early on and.
Right, but I guess my question is that we're projecting that it's going to expand beyond the 3.1 and even beyond the 3.6 million. So it would be useful to understand how we might make up the difference.
Go ahead.
Vice Chair Goldman.
Well, sorry, did Administrator Hill want to chime in first?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Something Director Vaughn and I discussed this morning. This project is slated for construction, remind me, late 2027. So there will be additional funds coming into that balance. And so today, the answer is no. If we had to go up for construction today and was $4 million, there's not enough there. We would have to look at other funding options. There will be additional revenue coming in over the next year and a half. Towards that, we will have to evaluate as we go along because this is not the only thing that fund pays for. And you're also going to want to balance if you had a sewer line break or something like that. So it's something we definitely need to evaluate. But today, no, there's not enough if it became a $4 million.
So maybe at the next touch point, we can understand what that funding plan might be.
There are options. There are multiple options. It isn't just a one option.
Vice Chair Goldman.
Well, it certainly is important to make sure that we have a plan for the project. I think what's before us tonight is much more limited in scope in that really we have, as a council, already approved 30% design. And so really the limited matter before us is do we want to make a $30,000 adjustment? And so really, the limited matter before us is, do we want to make a thirty thousand dollar adjustment to the thirty percent design? So I think it would be helpful to keep focused on that. That is our agenda item for tonight.
Polix, I'm looking down this, just a moment. Mr. Lebo, who else? Uh, Deputy Mayor Ferratani.
And and just to clarify your point, I appreciate your presentation, and I think you've made this point very clear, but the fact that we're allocating thirty thousand seven hundred and forty one dollars through this amendment to Phase Two means that presumably at some later phase, that cost will drop by thirty thousand seven hundred and forty one ish dollars.
I want to check with Councilmember Good, make sure you didn't have any questions.
Well, I I would be concerned. I, yes, I understand that we're focused on this amendment, and I think that that's the right thing to focus on, but I think at some later point, it would be a good idea to figure out if there are cost increases to perhaps four million dollars, what the possibility of where we would get that money. So that would be for a later date, but I think we should know at at the later date what that might be. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues at this end, and then I'll get back to Mr. Lebo and make sure everybody has a chance. Okay. Back to, oh, sorry. Let's go to Councilmember Riddle and Mr. Lebo, since you've already spoken.
I I know this is only our second touch, but is this work that they're working on, is there a time constraint for this for when you're going to bring back the third touch for us?
So they are under contract to finish thirty percent design by the end of the year. So w- with the holidays coming up, I I I would say that they they want to get working on this right now. They don't, they don't want to keep waiting. But that that's, December thirty first is our current deadline.
Because I'm concerned it to get kind of like a fuller picture of this before we approve this would just take too long. So I want to make sure that we're moving forward with this piece in a responsible manner. Would it, would it be helpful for us to look at passing that this tonight? Or is not not necessary?
It would be very helpful to get going on this work that we've paused on.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lebo, you've been very patient.
Uh, thank you. So in my over thirty five year career of managing very large projects, even though you may have a small amendment, it's important to understand what the total project value is and how you might fund the project so that we don't find ourselves in a situation later on that we can't actually move forward or that it becomes a surprise of how we fund the project, just a comment. I am supportive of moving forward of this, but I think it's important that we actually understand what we foresee as the total project value and the way that we're going to fund the project, even if it is across uh, biennial budgets. Help me understand, and I think you showed me this before, or showed the council before, the new laterals are needed because of the design change here, correct? We cannot use the existing laterals.
No, the existing laterals go in the opposite direction towards the lake.
Okay. And then do we have or will we need uh, council action or authority for us to be able to do the side sewers on the private property? Because normally we can't gift gift to a private owner's improvements. And that the side sewers are are normally the responsibility of the property owner and not of the city. So there's two questions. One is do we need to have a council action for the authority and is that consistent with that we don't typically do, cities typically don't do side sewers?
It's my understanding that in this case, we we are doing the side sewers for these homeowners as part of the project. I can't speak to the the history of that rule.
I'm speaking more to the authority. And you don't have to answer that tonight.
No, I was gonna say, we'll have to get with our city attorney when she's back in town.
Thank you.
What was the second question you had?
It's one both of us story authority and whether or not we have to have council action to do so. Because otherwise it might be considered a gift of public properties.
I think that might be another attorney question.
Deputy Mayor Ferratani.
Right, and I agree with Councilmember Lebo that it's good to understand basically if the CIP has enough funds to basically cover the project at some point. But as uh, as Vice Chair Goldman pointed out, we are narrowly looking at this amendment and I really would not want to hold up Conso in getting this done in a timely manner. So I'm uh, moving to waive the three touch rule for this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to waive the three touch rule. Uh, any further discussion? Comments, questions? Yeah, Deputy Mayor Ferratani.
And it is with the understanding that I'm hoping that the Finance Department and Public Works will come back with some more detailed information about the uh, about the funding of this project at some later date.
Thank you. Vice Chair Goldman.
As to the three touch rule, I'm supportive. Number one, because there is some time sensitivity in having Conso or complete all this design, the thirty percent design by the end of the year. And then number two, because it is effectively revenue neutral and that it's thirty thousand dollars more now, but it'll be thirty thousand dollars less in the next phase.
Paul, I, Councilmember Good, I apologize. I just saw your hand up there. You're really small.
I'm sorry about that. Uh, well, Councilmember.
I apologize.
Councilmember Lebo brought up an interesting thing for me, and that is if you're designing for a side sewer and and the the thought would be, is that considered a gift? Would the actual design be considered a gift too? I don't know. I'm just bringing it up because, you know, the actual construction, you know, maybe that's considered a gift, but would not the design also be considered a gift? Because it's including the side sewers? I don't know the answer. I just thought I would bring it up. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other, any other questions or comments about the three touch?
And I think the other thing that I'd like to have investigated, and again, not to get in the way of this amendment, but is to get the legality of the public gifting portion understood and what the council needs to act on in order to make this happen. That would be really good to know.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And Councilmember Lebo.
So I I think it's important that we do answer those questions and that I'm not in favor of waiving the three touch rule. I think there's an opportunity for us to address those issues in a timely manner.
Vice Chair Ferratani, Deputy Mayor Ferratani, excuse me.
Thank you. Uh, if I may ask, uh, our uh, uh, council, how long would it take to get an opinion on whether this constitutes a public gift?
Good, good evening, Deputy Mayor, uh, Mayor and Council, Eileen Kiefer, Madrona Law Group. You may recognize I'm not Kim Adams Pratt. I'm not your normal city attorney. I am one of her law partners, so I'm happy to be here tonight. Um, I'm taking detailed notes and we can, we can look into that before Kim gets back, hopefully with the idea of getting something either like early next week. That that would be the goal.
So.
Yes, Deputy Mayor Ferratani.
So um, if we were to delay this vote until the next council meeting, which would be later in this month, would that, would that cause an undue hardship in terms of Conso meeting its December thirty first deadline?
The the one thing that I have in my mind is that we have to do site visits with homeowners and I was not wanting to try to schedule those during the holiday times. Um, and I, and I also wanted to be courteous and give everyone enough leeway to say, when, when may I come to your home? So th- that's my main concern. I think that we can get Conso to do their their work, their computer faced work quickly. So, and that would happen after the site visits.
Councilmember Good, do you shove your hand up or again? Please.
Okay, so then what would be the repercussion or what would be if it was considered a gift of public money and you do go ahead with it? What would, what would be the repercussion if you do move forward with it? Again, I don't know the answer. You know, if it's deemed that it's, that you can't do it, then what would be? What would be the action needed? I don't know. I just thought, I'm just concerned. I wouldn't want to make uh, five homeowners be responsible for some funding that they may not have expected. That's what I would be concerned at as as a homeowner, but I, again, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Yeah. I think we're kind of talking about the do we want to finish the three touch rule convert uh, vote first?
Yeah, we're actually getting off topic here. So, yeah, you're absolutely correct, a point of procedure. If if Councilmember Cartney, if it's on the question of suspending the three touch rule, then please continue, but.
Yeah, my, well, my comment was just around, I would prefer to have legal comment before making a decision. I would prefer to to have legal comment before making a decision, and if it's getting it in a matter of a week, I mean, I appreciate wanting to give homeowners general time, but if this is around a gift, I want it to be really concrete from a legal perspective. It's just my opinion.
What's uh, what's your pleasure maker of the motion?
Withdraw my motion then, because I, you know, I think these are important questions and with with respect to basically, you're trying to be kind to our homeowners. I think this is a fairly it's a, it's a legal point that if we were to move forward, we couldn't really undo very easily. So you know, with with apologies to you, I think I will withdraw my motion.
Okay. Uh, does the second or agree? Are you, who is the secondor? You were.
Not necessarily. I think I I I don't. I don't know. I mean, because in my mind, if this becomes a gift issue, then we really have no way of doing the project. Because the depth of the part that's in the right of way is dependent upon how the homes can connect to it. So normally you have your depths in the right of way, and then the homeowners figure out how to connect to it, but we're needing that information now. So I think regardless, it's required to get our work done. And so I think this is, this is a project that we have been decade, maybe, working on. I think it needs to move forward before that lift station completely conks out. Because that's the only thing worse than having someone come to your house and measure out your yard.
Point of order. The author of the motion has withdrawn the motion, so there is no motion to talk about. Unless a new motion is introduced. Point of clarification.
I'm gonna have to look to our attorney on the procedural part of this. I'm, I I thought that the secondor needed to concur.
Give me just a second here to get my, my Robert's rules cheat sheet out, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, Vice Chair Goldman, I want to make sure we constrain ourselves to.
What it's worth, my understanding is that once it, the motion was made and seconded, the motion now belongs to the body. And so it can't be unilaterally withdrawn. But I believe we would need to just move forward with a vote on the three touch rule. But I'll, I'll wait for clarity from our council.
Yeah, I would, oh, let's take a five minute recess, everybody. So Ms. Phillips can get a glass of water and you all can stretch your legs. Recession for five minutes. To, uh, let's make it eight thirty. From our attorney, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So there's two questions, I believe, that you needed me to look into. The first one is the procedural one about whether a motion can be withdrawn. It cannot be withdrawn. Once it's made, it doesn't need to be uh, or the the it needs to be voted on. So that was the the motion, I believe, to suspend the rules on the three touches. Um, and then the second one, probably the more, the more crucial one before you decide what to do with with the three touch rule is the gift of public funds issue. So I've had a chance to huddle with project staff. As I said, I'm not your normal attorney, so I I'm not super steeped in this project, but I've gotten um, a bit up to speed now. It's my understanding that the project would essentially strand the side sewers that are there, that the city's project would cause those to no longer be usable. So, so given that we, you know, there's a concern that that without including the side sewers for the projects, that would actually open the city up to takings claims, right? Because the city's project is the one causing, causing the problem and essentially cutting off sewer service to to homes, which is obviously not something the city is going to to desire. So I I think we've solved the the gift of public funds issue. It's not really a gift because it's a, it's avoiding a takings claims instead, or really a series of takings claims. So I hope that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our attorney or colleagues that have someone look around the dais? I know these are really important questions. Okay.
Just thank our attorney for the quick action. Thank you so much.
Pride by fire tonight. Welcome to Lake Forest Park. Yeah, we we like these intellectual exercises, so, but thank you.
So point of order, um, the the motion then for the waiving the three touch rule is still on the table?
It is.
Okay, that's my understanding. Yes. Uh, so any other comments about or questions about the three touch rule? On point. Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of waiving the three touch rule for, let me remember the resolution again. Resolution twenty five two zero two seven, please say aye. Are there any ayes? Okay, waiving the three touch rule passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Would anyone like to make a motion on the main uh, resolution? Deputy Mayor Ferratani.
Yes, I'd like to um, move uh, resolution twenty five dash twenty twenty seven, authorizing the mayor to sign amendment number one to the professional services agreement AG twenty four dash zero four four with Conso North America Incorporated for Phase Two Thirty Percent Design Services for the Beach Drive Lift Station Project.
Clarification, the uh, resolution is twenty twenty six in the resolution, twenty twenty seven in the title. Could you confirm what the correct resolution number is before we move forward?
I would consider that a scrupulous error, so I can.
You can fix afterwards? Okay. Well, then I I second the motion.
Thank you for your attention to Councilmember Riddle. Any questions or comments on the motion at hand? Hearing none, all those in favor of uh, adoption of resolution twenty five two zero two seven, authorizing the mayor to sign amendment number one to professional services agreement AG twenty four dash zero four four with Conso North America Incorporated for Phase Two Thirty Percent Design Services for the Beach Drive Lift Station Station Project signify by saying aye. Any ayes? Yeah, I have it. It passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We got there.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Ms. Phillips. You've been very patient with all of us. We really appreciate that. And with that, see where are we now? We are on to uh, other business.
No, council discussion.
Oh, council discussion.
I just wanted to clarify uh, that we have a
Apologies.
The the future schedule doesn't include this, but is everybody okay with the cow on uh, I forgot the date now, November?
Twenty, was it the twenty fourth?
Yep.
Twenty fourth. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, November twenty fourth, which is uh, Thanksgiving week.
Right, the month before Thanksgiving, yes.
There's some challenges because of other scheduling conflicts.
Which was the date? The week of the week of Thanksgiving?
Right, November twenty fourth.
And your request is to keep it, cancel it?
No, to keep it.
To keep it.
Well, to to schedule.
To schedule it, yeah.
It wasn't.
Because technically, because it wasn't scheduled. Okay. I mean.
Like I'm sitting under a blast furnace right here.
Could we schedule it the week before? Or is that, is there a timing issue that I'm unaware of?
When we proposed the seventeenth, other council members had conflicts with that date.
Yeah, I I'm 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 iffy on the twenty fourth.
I want to go around the horn and do a head nod on the twenty fourth.
Can we get a head nod on the twenty fourth for other?
Councilmember Lebo, council.
Sorry, head nod uh, in favor or?
That you're available.
Yes, I'm available.
Yes, Councilmember Good? Affirmative. And Councilmember Goldman, okay.
Yeah, so I think we'll go ahead with that then.
That's fine.
Apologies to Councilmember Riddle.
And may we're mooted. We'll see. I may remote in, we'll see what happens.
Fair enough.
Um, all right, thank you. You bet, any other council discussion, interaction, okay? Other business, I understand we have another item.
Yes, I do have one personnel um, motion to make. Uh, a move to approve the separation and release agreement between the City of Lake Forest Park and Christian Hansen, authorizing the city administrator to execute the agreement and implement its terms, including severance in the amount of five thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and seventy five cents plus applicable withholdings.
We're taking people, people, you have this on, on, uh, in front of you, um, and may I borrow that to repeat it, thank you, sir. Um, do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, uh, to approve the separation and release agreement between the City of Lake Forest Park and Christian Hansen. Any comments or discussion, I would caution that. Uh, hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the separation and release agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes, yeah, I have it, thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, council, very much for that. Um, another piece of business concluded, okay, uh, council committee reports. You have any, uh, Deputy Mayor Ferratoni?
Yeah, I have a quick one, um, the uh, Climate Hub at Third Place Center is having its dedication and opening on Sunday, October twelfth, that is, say, the Sunday, at ten AM, it's running till noon, there will be uh, several community uh, groups, including um, neighboring communities who are participating in this as well, so I would like to invite all of you to come out and take a look at the mural, take a look at basically with some of the uh, what the other uh, organizations are doing.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and on point, I am in, out of town, would you be kind enough to make a couple remarks at that event?
Absolutely, we're gonna have a pretty interesting announcement, so.
Okay, great, thank you, sir. Yeah. That's starting to sound like Dogman-esque, if you know Dogman, anyway, please.
Um, yes, Seashore met last week, we had an update regarding um, next year's uh legislative session and the Seashore legislative agenda, the gist of it, and I think we'll probably hear something similar from our state lobbyist, the gist is that due to financial challenges, it is unlikely that the state or the rep, uh, state legislature is going to be taking up any large fiscal bills, but they are likely going to be more receptive to no cost policy bills. And so that's something we might think about as a city.
Thank you, that was a very, uh, a really positive discussion uh, with our friends, colleagues, other council member, council committee reports, council member reports. Going around the horn here, quiet bunch, going once, um, mayor's report real quick, I, oh, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, go right in.
Um, there's a uh, meeting of uh, um, the, uh, let's see, it's called the Work Session for King County Electeds for the uh, K four C, that is the Climate Committee uh, at the county level, it's going to be downtown at the four hundred and one Fifth Avenue Building on October twenty fourth between one and three PM, if anyone's interested in going.
Cool, thank you. Um, yeah, other events too, if you guys hear about other events, some, some, some of us are on some email list and some other, others are sort of depending on interest sometimes, so um, it's always great to bring them up just in case. Um, I'll make mine really brief, I, this is really cool, I think I told you la- at our last meeting that I had an inside track that the heron that, that we saved was successfully released, but I got a follow up email today which was really great, saying regarding the great blue heron that you brought in on September second, reference number yada, 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 we have Paul's, uh, uh, Paul's Wildlife Rehabilitation Center happy to inform you that this animal was successfully rehabilitated and released back into its natural habitat, on and on and on, so these guys do a really great job. John, your, your son is lucky to work with that organization, I think that's pretty darn cool, they, they called me before, but then I get an email uh, as sort of a case number and knowing that the animal was rehabbed, so it's pretty, pretty, um, pretty fun. There are lots of animals out there right now, deer, um, there've been a couple of bear sightings, so um, keep that in mind, as a matter of fact, I think there was a um, there was an otter up the creek the other day, which I guess surprised the beavers that are along there, so um, yeah, it's, it's getting darker out there, please be careful, particularly around our schools. I was at Lake Forest Park Elementary um, last week um, at about six thirty and wow, there are cars just flying by, uh, and it was very difficult to see a dusk, so please be very cautious. We are still on target, not we, our friends at Washdaw are still on target to get the project done. It's a little bit after the thirty first, as I understand it, um, but it's moving along a pace. How many of you guys have been up there to see it, they're starting to cover the, it's pretty amazing, um, the mu- mu- large sections of the culvert are in there, they're starting to backfill, they're starting to really move along and um, so it's going to be exciting to see the end result of that one.
Tomorrow morning, water is supposed to be flowing through.
That's right, that's right, yeah, they're gonna get rid of the pumps, so that's very exciting, and I, we need to give a big shout out to the PD, they have been working that absolutely continuously, um, and uh, every time, I'm up there four or five times a day driving the route and, and checking on things just so I can sleep at night, and the PD, literally every time I see one of the, one of our officers driving by or sitting on the side of the road to make sure, and if you look at the heat map, there have been considerable citations issued both there and through some of the cut through areas, hats off to the team, they're, they're doing a great job. And I did see, and I didn't get a chance to tell you this, chief, I actually was behind a state patrol yesterday, driving through the route. So that's the first time I've seen them, so we hope they'll be there a little more. So, that's all I have, Administrator Hill, anything to highlight from your novel, novella?
My novella, it's mostly the police chief's novella this time, but um, just a quick update on the Burt Gilman Trail improvements, walked that today. Um, a couple of those intersections are already complete, they're moving steadily this way. Um, pavement markings obviously haven't been painted to date, that'll be weather dependent, but the concrete's going down, truncated domes, new yield signs, um, the bollards have been removed, so that, that work is continuing, the detour's a little sketchy, I wouldn't want to be on a bike to do that detour, you definitely have to dismount, but they are, they are moving along quickly and it, it looks nice, so that's all I have to add.
Oh, speaking of construction projects, um, I did go, I was up at the, the um, overlay, taking a look at the overlay in Horizon View, it's turned out great. Uh, there've been some community comments, Deputy Mayor Ferratoni passed along a comment about some, some stripage and some things that might need to be done up there. Um, but uh, I also took the opportunity to, I found another trail that he might be able to work on. I met a very nice family, um, that lives right at the top of that undeveloped right away, so um, we'll leave it there. I hope you all have a very good evening, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, okay, we're adjourned, thank you, everybody.